Is to swear in our new commissioner.
Joe, welcome.
Raise your right hand. I do swam and swear.
I do swam and swear.
I will support the constitution of the United States.
I will support the constitution of the United States.
Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
Cato Township Planning Commission.
Cato Township Planning Commission.
And for the township of Cato in Moncom- or county of Moncom.
For the county of Moncom.
According to best my abilities.
According to best my abilities.
Congratulations. Everybody's here tonight. Ready to copy the agenda. If so be.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second. Discussion. Home paper. Not, watching carry. The October meeting minutes. You all see the copy of that? So, entertain a motion to approve that if.
I'll make a motion to approve.
For October. Second.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Okay.
All the comments.
Well, I just want to, again, say thank you for all the hard work you folks do in your planning. I'm real excited about the future for Cato Township. I'm real excited about what's happening in at our board level. I'm excited about what the vision will be for the township and and for our community. And I just want you to know that as far as the Cato Township alliance, we're still working. We're working on hopefully bringing new ideas and new things that cover agriculture, that cover sporting, that cover our lake out here, that's a great resource that really needs to be fixed. And your master plan for the future of our community. I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Just told them I'll close public comments. Dave is on your part.
Uh, October there were no permits issued, November there was one permit for a pole barn at one one eight seven two north Yale Road. And uh, we received a variance that hasn't gone through yet, but I just turned it in. Not too long ago, I'd say a week ago. And it's for one zero one eight two Cameran Road. And uh, his lawn, okay, he wants, the reason why I questioned the variance is because I wanted to build a pole barn to keep the fifth wheel in. The fifth wheel is twelve foot six inch tall, so I need a thirteen foot door and fourteen foot ceiling. Okay, so uh.
So what would approve?
We just increased accessory building height to eight.
The height, yeah, which hasn't been, hasn't gone through the other board yet, has it?
Yeah, we approved it and it's supposed to be listed.
It's supposed to be in the paper tomorrow. I see Todd put it on the website.
And I did tell the guy he could uh, wait if he wanted to, but he needs to get it done for uh, his RV and all before winter sets in.
Tomorrow it should be official, so seems like he could return his check.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Larry, I gave it to Larry. I can call uh, the guy tomorrow or, yeah, tomorrow and uh, tell him to just wait now. Now, once the board approves it, if they approve it.
They already.
That means the effective date is already done, it just hasn't been published until tomorrow.
It doesn't, it has to wait until it's published to be official. Okay, then it doesn't have to wait after that any days or?
I think Todd already put it on the website.
Okay, so I'll, I'll give him a call and tell him that uh, he can get a refund on that, just write a check for the permit and it'll be approved.
I did see something posted in the window for his EBA, so maybe that's what.
Yeah, they may have, they canceled the EBA meeting unless it was a regular scheduled date anyway, I don't know. I think they have three of yours.
Check that. Are you gonna call Larry?
Yeah, I'll call Larry. Um, I don't know how late he's up at night, but.
Well, tomorrow was fine, it'll be in the late, should be in the Lakeview paper.
That's also sure, I just wouldn't give that variance back to him, right?
Yeah.
Company will accept that.
Now, since ad was written in the paper, won't be a problem, willing for us to cancel or.
Well, I don't even know if it's been in the paper.
Oh.
I think I saw it December twenty ninth on the window, so that's a few weeks away, so they probably got it run, yeah. I guess, we'll wait and see, but yeah, it doesn't seem like it's necessary if it's the same thing.
Yeah, I wish I had the uh.
That was the only reason to reject the N R A day was just the height?
Yeah. The check was written out on eleven thirty, so.
We were willing to have that approved, so there's no.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, and other than that, that's.
I didn't do it in November, because November they're on township board, so.
Did you turn the check in then, or you saw the check?
Yeah, I, whenever there's a variance, I turn it in with M special use, with the application.
It's a choice of have that.
Okay, twelve one or twenty two is when I denied it, so. Today's what, fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
So it's only been, I don't think.
So the eleven thirty check was the forty dollar zoning permit, not the two hundred dollar variance?
The eleven thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we don't, we don't know if he's paid the two hundred or not, that's what the variance is?
I'm sure he paid it because it, I don't turn it into Larry unless I have a check with him. And I don't, just a copy of the check because it goes directly to the board, or.
Alright, yeah, he can just, I guess, talk to Larry and see.
Yeah, I'll call him over, sing in the morning garden tonight.
Just make sure you put that in your, again, if your next one's meeting, just make sure he gets a refund. Just sounds like the meat of the check's already done. So, any other?
Uh, that's, that's all good.
Now, the Cameran Road and.
What's the guy's name?
Yes, Ken eighteen two. What's that?
You got the guy's name?
Uh, Bradford, uh. It looks like an L A I R D. Tell you in a second, I have a copy of a check there somewhere, I noticed. Keep my record straight or something ends up missing. Uh, that's Neil Craig Towers, he's the guy that uh, wrote the check, must be the contractor.
That was his forty dollars, they have a check, you know, copy?
You know, I'm looking here, there's a forty dollar check, yeah, that was uh, Neil Craig Towers, that was on eleven thirty or twenty two is when he uh, wrote it. That was forty dollars.
Yeah, not the forty.
Yeah, the two hundred, I don't have, well, I have a copy of it, but uh, I've heard all that in. Whenever there's variance, I have to deny it first, so uh, I, I keep all that together, all the paperwork together, so that it doesn't get spread out or anything.
One oh one eight two Cameran Road. It's like you just gave me August.
One oh one eighty two, now that's December, okay?
That was in December.
In December, I don't turn in until, I keep everything monthly, I keep it as simple as I can.
I just thought maybe it might be on November, but it wasn't.
Because it's not final, I said.
Board report?
Randy says it should be in the paper tomorrow, the first. Variance, what we're talking about was one thing, and then we made a motion and approved it for Randy to get a terabyte hard drive. And then we approved a hundred dollar bonus for each member on the planning commission for the hard work we did on the wind ordinance. Master plan update, Todd still says nobody else has contacted him, so he's supposed to find out. According to, he said the village has gotten a new master plan. And he's supposed to find out, and I haven't heard anything, I don't think he's saying you went in there, but. Don't like being beaten down dead horse, but.
Well, we have McKenna Land Plan here too.
Okay.
And she's gonna.
Good.
We're gonna give her questions here.
Yes. And we approved the uh, B F W Hall refund, and then I just give them the update on. Anything change?
Todd, you guys also approved reimbursement for going to MCC that week, because I got a thirty dollar check.
Yeah, anything, any of the meetings you want to, you should have gotten a hundred dollars plus what you want. Remember, I have to see.
If that's, should I send you your, your check that you received from last month, so. Any questions for Dave, anybody? Thank them on my behalf, as far as following up on that, as far as reimbursement too, so appreciate that very much, take care of the team, so. Old business, um, first agenda there is the McKenna Land Plan, so Danielle Bouchard?
Bouchard, yeah.
Bouchard, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
We give you a copy of our master plan. And as a township, we're looking for a company to help us through that process because we need to update it. Um, tell us a little bit about your company.
So, um, my name is Danielle Bouchard, I work with McKenna, um, we are one of Michigan's largest planning firms. Um, I'm out of the Grand Rapids office along with my colleague Chris Corey, who's the West Michigan manager, and Jeff Kiesler, who's an associate planner. Um, and we have an office out in Northville, and then we also have another one in Calhoun Zoo. Um, I'm a senior planner with McKenna, I've been here with them for a little over three years. Um, prior to that, I have experience working from more of a regional lens for the Ottawa County Planning Department, and then I did some zoning administration prior to that, uh, when I was out of college. Um, as far as, um, the work that we do, um, I assist communities all around the state, but mostly on the, on the west side now. Um, in master plans, zoning ordinances, site plan review, um, corridor plans, uh, DDA plans, tip plans. Basically, you know, we, we wear a lot of hats. I'm to understand that you guys are kind of looking for an update of the twenty ten plan. Um, even just kind of flipping through it, I have already a couple of comments that I think that we can address. Um, and, and just from a, from a very base level. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the planning process, how long it typically takes, costs associated with it, a, a plan of, of this caliber, um, which I'm sort of leaning is maybe more of, rather than starting from scratch, just an, uh, mostly an update and making sure that, you know, we're addressing existing conditions and, and uh, development that you guys have been seeing and, and where, and kind of planning where that might go, targeted density, things like that. Um, I guess that's kind of my, my elevator pitch, I guess, for, for what we do.
I'd say all those questions, you know, how, how long, how much, I mean, what you just, like, I don't even know if there's an electronic version of that.
Not that I've found.
Yeah, I mean, we could scan it, but there's no like word template or anything, so I'm assuming, you know, we, we talked about that too. Do we start from scratch, or do we just update what we have, so, you know, all of, you know, those questions you mentioned, I'm sure we'd like to hear.
Okay, so, starting with that, um, probably what I would do is scan this in and then have our administrative team put it into a word version, and then kind of go from there, so we can start editing from what had, the work that's already been completed. Um, and I say that because I, just my initial, um, opinion as I'm flipping through this is that I think there's still a lot of good bones here and a lot of good usable content as far as targeting density in areas that are appropriate, like around M forty six, and, um, surrounding the village and kind of addressing that development pressure around the village of Lakeview that you guys are likely seeing. But I would like to add some more meat to that, so how can we, um, design our zoning ordinance to make sure that our, um, our rural residential and agricultural areas are still being preserved and we're not compromising the existing character that people love about the township and why they live here? Um, so that would, that's my first thought. My second thought on that would be to add a little bit more, um, content, um, with regard to where we see development that has occurred over recent years since twenty ten, and how can we plan to, to make sure that future land uses are working in conjunction with that? So, for example, if you guys have been seeing a lot of development along those, um, along M forty six and along, uh, on the periphery of the village, we want to make sure that our future land use plan kind of addresses that, and then also, you know, do we want to expand that? And how do we want our joint planning efforts with the village, um, to, to work with what we're doing as well? Um, I'm to understand you guys, as we're in Village Hall right now, have a really close relationship with the village, so I definitely would want to incorporate them into our planning efforts to make sure that all of these pieces are kind of working together.
Have you seen theirs online?
Pardon?
Have you seen the village's master plan online?
Uh, did I see that today? No, I don't think I saw it.
Okay, it is out there, you should be able to pull that.
Do you know when they updated it last? Twenty twenty. Oh, so it's new?
It's been in the last couple of years.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, that is on, on the Cato Township for the Village of Lakeview, you can, you can pull it out, so.
Okay, good to know, thank you. Um, my other thoughts, as I was flipping through this, is, um, there is a mention of more housing opportunities, um, I would like to take a look at that, what does that look like for the township? And also hear from residents on what exactly that means to them. Um, and I'll get into public engagement too, which is a, a big component of this. Something else I wanted, I was thinking about as I was going through this very briefly, um, ag preservation tools. Um, what mechanisms can we kind of beef up, what in our master plan and in our zoning ordinance to make sure that prime agricultural areas or agricultural, um, uh, uh, soils and farmland and stuff is not being compromised by future land use plans and, and things like that? So we want to make sure that we're preserving our prime agricultural areas and our ag lands. Another thing I was wondering, um, ag tourism, have you guys, um, do you find any pressure as far as that goes? Like cider mills, wineries, anything like that that has kind of caused a little bit of a stir as far as like, is this commercial, is this? And how that all fits together?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's something I've been thinking about, um, so one of my projects that I'm working on is the Ganges Township Master Plan. Granted, that's a lakeshore community along Lake Michigan, but very agricultural in nature, but also has major thoroughfares running through it, so they're kind of facing similar development pressure. And, uh, that just happens to be something that I've been kind of pulling, um, from many of the more rural communities that I've been working with. Wind and solar, which I noticed that solar is already on your agenda for tonight, um, that's some, probably a hot button thing I'm imagining that maybe the master plan might want to touch on. I also was thinking about, um, new maps. Um, the maps that are in here are a little bit difficult to read, so we'll want to update that using twenty twenty census information, updating all the demographic stuff, um, so that's pretty standard. So, the general process, I guess, now taking a step back, typically takes about ten to twelve months. Mostly because there's a lot of, uh, well, public engagement number one usually takes about one to two months, and then the state also has a couple hoops you have to jump through that take time. Um, there's like a required sixty-three day comment period and, and all that stuff, so that's just like, you know, uh, two, two months that are just kind of part of the process. So I'd say in general, about ten to twelve months, kind of depending on how much public engagement you guys want to do, and, um, that can be flexible along the way, but generally speaking. Cost wise, for a plan update to this capacity, ballpark figure, I'm gonna say roughly between sixteen to twenty-two thousand, but that probably depend, a lot of that depends on the level of public engagement you guys wanted to embark on. So what I can do, if you guys would like me to move forward in, after this discussion, to write a proposal, I can write down a menu of options, so costs can be a little bit flexible from that capacity. Um, so a menu of options for particularly pertaining to public engagement, that's kind of where we can sort of figure out where that cost makes the most sense for you guys. Typically, we like to do public engagement at the beginning of the process, um, more often than not, that looks like a public, uh, a public survey, um, which is advertised to everybody, however, um, I've seen communities will send out postcards, or they'll just use social media, or they'll have downtown businesses hand out flyers. There's a couple different options that, um, you guys can take and, um, we can talk through. Because we, of course, don't want to make a plan that the public, that our taxpayers are not supportive of, and, and of course, our stakeholders are our most important, um, folks in, in this process, and I wouldn't feel comfortable writing a plan, you guys wouldn't feel comfortable adopting a plan that doesn't have input from residents and business owners. Um, so that is the, the major driving process for what I do. Um, so typically how, and the, how it generally looks is that we'll do a kickoff, we'll talk about existing conditions, we'll talk about, um, demographics and how that's changed since the last plan was done in twenty ten, and then we'll talk about what that means for, from a planning perspective and, and planning implications that are related to those demographics. And then from that point, we'll move on to public engagement, and then public engagement results, um, drive our goals and objectives, which then drive our future land uses and zoning, in a nutshell. And then we also, uh, will include an action plan at the end of the plan, um, that will have a detailed matrix that shows who does what and when, and this is how you implement your, uh, the overall vision for the community over X amount of time. I think, um, I think I, that's pretty much the gist of it. I guess, short story long.
Very, that's helpful.
So, you guys have any questions? Alex?
I got one.
Go ahead.
For the board payment, the like monthly, or how do you?
Yeah, so we typically do invoices monthly, um, they will be, like, you'll see on there what percentage of the, uh, plan is complete for each, um, payment that, or each invoice that we're, uh, sending to you, and then it'll tell, it'll itemize what work we've done and why you're getting billed, what you're getting billed for. Um, so at the end of the project, it would be, of course, a hundred percent of whatever the contract ends up being. But you wouldn't get hit with a huge fee right away. Yeah, my time is built out really, for a project like this.
You worked at, with any, you said West Michigan, any, any townships getting closer to this area, just out of curiosity, or?
Um, where was I just recently? Uh, Sparta, Villages Sparta, um, they're one of my clients right now as well. We're in a, just in the beginning stages of the master plan for, uh, the village, and I'm really excited about that one because they've got a lot going on there. Um, so that'll be a fun project. I have worked a little bit with, uh, the Villages Shelby, which I think is a little bit further north and west of here. In Oceana County, but nonetheless, um, I have a, uh, it's not necessarily a project that's been kicked off yet, but I've been working with them, um, to kind of figure out the logistics of downtown public engagement that they want to do.
But definitely a lot of rural areas similar to this where, you know, we've got a lot of ag and.
Yes, yeah.
Stuff like that.
Yep, I would say, um, Ganges Township in Alleghan is probably the most comparable that I have currently on my desk, with exception of the, of the shore of Lake Michigan, because there's, um, environmental factors that will be really taken into account in that plan. Whereas this plan will probably touch on that, but that is, there probably would be like a whole chapter dedicated to doing preservation. Another thing I was wondering too, um, utilities, how does that look, what does that look like for the township? Are you guys, like, is there any pressure for any extensions, or are you guys not looking to extend utilities as far as like how future commercial and, uh, and, uh, industrial type of development would go?
As far as like our infrastructure in town?
Correct, yeah, water sewer.
Um, electrically, we're still pending a substation update.
Okay.
But, one of these years.
Maybe, um, along the M forty six corridor, the, the water sewer thing has maybe come up. I know there's been some property that's been annexed by the village, so that they can offer the.
Is that new building for the metro system getting connected? So, I mean, they are slowly, as projects go.
I can talk a little bit about that, if you want me to say so. Okay, so, it's probably been about six years ago, five, six years ago, the village, uh, had input from the citizens about running the water and sewer of the village right around the corner along M forty six. So there was a plan, um, it's when Jake, Jake was the village manager, and the majority of the citizens said no. Unfortunately, um, which cost me twenty-eight thousand dollars that I put a new system in, but, at my house, but yes. So I think that's a great idea to talk about, honestly, for the buildup of the Cato Township around the village. I think it's a great idea.
They have ran, I mean, uh, sewer and water all the way out to the new Dollar Store on, on forty six.
That corridor.
We, uh, I'm a member of, trustee of the church out there on the corner, and they just flagged, surveyed Miss Dig all the way back through our parking lot again, so they're coming back, and, uh, the manhole covers are in our parking lot. So there, I, I just saw the flags yesterday coming from the new Spectrum Hospital.
Yeah.
So I think they're gonna run pipe from Spectrum now, all the way down to our, and hook in right there in front of our church on the corner of forty six. So that's coming in.
So I think, I think, to attest to it, progress as far as extending things goes, project basis, we don't really have anything. We're gonna lay all of this for future possibilities, I think they can kind of plan it as they go.
Okay, that's something I think that maybe, um, through this project, that we might want to assess out with the public on how they feel about, um, potential hook-ins or extension areas, um, because a lot of that will, uh, drive our future land use plan. Because we don't want to plan for a bunch of commercial development if knowing how sewer water connections aren't happening. And with more rural communities, um, I find that it's very one way or the other. People are really super forward and excited, or they're really super against it. Not to say one way or the other is good or bad necessarily, but, um, just something to think about, uh, throughout this process, that typically utilities broadband is another one that I like to take a look at further in more rural setting communities, is, is, do you guys know if there's any issues with that in the area?
There has been, and it's being corrected rapidly.
Okay, that's great.
There's, there's a company out of, um, Stan, which is a cancerous, not a lot of land, they've got a lot of crown based fiber, and then with our Rural Electric Authority, which is Tri-County, here, anybody with Tri-County within the next four years will have fiber optic high speed. So that's all part of government subsidized, uh, high speed internet access programs that is, actually, I finally got hooked up. Amazing.
That's great to hear.
I think everything in town is still pretty well covered with. Spectrum.
Spectrum, yeah.
CMS, I'm pleasant.
Is it, but it's still a wire-based system here in town, I think there is, but.
Okay. Another thing that this plan will likely touch on are, uh, parks and trails. Is the township actively pursuing any parkland or bike trails in the area, or?
They're gonna try to do a trail, but.
In the village, they want to do a trail.
Around the lake.
Oh, that's cool.
But the township is kind of.
Yeah, but the township has kind of pledged a little bit of money in the planning stages, like, maybe there would be, be some
coordination, coordinated effort, but it's kind of very early in the planning stages and might be a little stalled at, at the moment.
They have a little bit of a trail run out of current, but they want to extend it all, like you said, all the way around the lake. They use some of the arc market. Some land.
Don't, doesn't that trail go in the village and, and out into our Cato?
It would, yeah, yeah. I think those are huge, and some of those communities out there are, are a big draw.
Um, have you guys found that you've had a challenge with, um, getting people involved at all, like, do you find that, or do you anticipate public engagement being difficult?
Well, I'll tell you, we just approved our, our, uh, wind, forty, we, we just went through that whole process, it took us probably fourteen, fifteen months. And over a year to do.
Oh, okay.
So we're, and now we're moving into the solar, um, I can tell you that we had a lot of participation with, with the wind. And if those individuals could still come, and, and, I mean, I think they, they will with solar also, and we can tie that in with the, the plan.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think they're, they're pretty engaged, they really are.
That's great, I, uh.
That's my opinion, yeah.
I think we went from not engagement because we didn't have anything controversial, to when something controversial happened, and it blew up.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
Partially the reason why I'm sitting at this table, this whole process.
I can tell you, we're all pretty much new, except for, hate to say today, you've been here the longest.
Since fourteen.
Yeah, so the rest of us are all relatively new or the last, I don't know.
Well, this is Joe's first meeting.
And we see that we needed to update that, uh, master plan, so that's why we're back pushing for that, that was.
Absolutely, absolutely, especially, uh, where you guys are situated, um, geographically speaking, within pretty close proc- close proximity to Grand Rapids, other urbanized areas, Rockford, Sparta, all of that, um, it really does put some development pressure on you guys, I think. Um, especially with this historic downtown here, downtowns are really making a comeback post-COVID that I've seen. Um, so it's definitely the perfect opportunity, plus ARPA funds coming through for many communities that they're kind of looking to sort of update things and, um, put, uh, planning more at the, at the forefront if they had to kind of allocate funds elsewhere prior to, um.
Despite the, the, the village is working well, I would, um, on different aspects of it, which is a good thing, so.
Yeah.
And if you drive through town like this evening, I mean, they'll tell them.